...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, equal, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for a moment, so I can reflect. Thank you. Roll call.
Christine.
Here.
Shitman.
Here.
Henry.
Here. Randy here? Let's see Randy. Well, maybe she'll get her little ear. If you're not familiar with that, but that teen work camp was, and I don't want to jump in on Randy because if she does, I'll let her talk when she gets there, but I know I got to go down when they opened it up and when they closed it, and it was about three hundred and eighty-four, I believe, kids that were here that week. And they should, there was at least four people that talked about what they got accomplished and that type of thing, but it was an amazing thing, it really was. There was a lot many kids pumped up over anything, so I don't know if anybody in this room that actually got any repairs done to their house or how much they got accomplished is a lot of younger people, so I'm assuming they had some supervisor, had some carpentry knowledge and things like that, but truly, I know my shirt said like fourteen, they were down in Kentucky like the week before, so again, I don't, I think they said there was fifty-six properties that they were going to maintain, they were going to improve, and I believe fifty out of fifty-six got done. Think what happens sometimes, they get into a project, start like replacing a portion when you get to the bottom, you find out it's much worse and it's beyond your capabilities to fix them, so I know there was a couple that didn't get done, but I think she said fifty out of fifty-six, like I said, she comes, but let her talk, but truly, it was an amazing feat and great for the community.
Two of them got citizen accommodations for me for helping us solve a hit run.
That's right.
We're up on Catalina Avenue, they had a hit run and they tried to take off, but those kids were out with their phones, taking pictures. They got lights, play description, and solved in about fifteen minutes, so I gave them the letter of accommodation from his department. Well, they have salted him too.
There you go, say we're on top of everything. Any audience comment on any specific agenda items in front of you? Unfinished business. John, you the chief administrative officer, that's the plan.
We need to name a chief administrative officer for the non-uniform pension plan. That would be everyone except the police department. This is an administrative position rather than an executive position, and after discussion, I'd like to nominate Terry Spang as the chief administrative officer for the non-uniform pension.
Second?
Yes.
Yes.
Henry.
Yes.
Ister.
Yes. Open bids, Dale?
Okay, everybody should have big sheets in front of them, they go in order. You have that stuff?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, this first HRI is in the now. Metlys bid is one hundred four thousand dollars, one dollar and forty cents. The next one is HRI Incorporated. An HRI of one hundred fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty cents. The next one is New Enterprise Film and Loan. Their bid is one hundred nine thousand dollars, four hundred and, uh, five hundred and forty-two dollars and seventy-two cents. And the next one is GR Charles. They're a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and twelve cents.
So, the next one from DC has applied a debt line today. So, I guess we have any questions?
I can answer your question. Is this, what are you doing? Is this, this is 2015 funding, right?
This is, this is from liquid fuel money that's sitting in the account now.
It's not 2015. See, I got an email, I got an email today just to remind me that we've already committed some thirteen, fourteen money, so.
It's a hundred thousand for the fake, phase one, that's covered, we still have, right now, we have three hundred and seventy-six thousand for the fields. So, the hundred for phase one this year, and that still leaves us two seventy-six, we have the payment for the sweeper yet, and we have one more, right Kevin? Okay, okay, so that's fifty thousand, we're covered there, right?
Is the 2014, is that for the second phase?
Is that?
Is the 2014?
I don't know, I looked at the minutes, Rick and myself had just come on board, that was the very first meeting in January, we voted on it, but I don't, I didn't really know where to vote, I did not vote in. So, I'm assuming these figures were gotten off Jim, that was probably a little bit before nineteen.
Well, the thing has, it has CDB twelve, eleven, thirteen, has 2013 liquid fuels a hundred thousand, 2014 liquid fuels a hundred thousand, I just want to make sure if, if we get to use that, it's there.
The hundred thousand will be there for the phase one, that, we looked in the minutes, I thought this is there, they're going to get the hundred thousand. Uh, Kevin?
Barry Gorman released it to us. He approved two hundred and thirty-three thousand, because that's what the payment is, that is for phase one, so he released two hundred and thirty-three thousand, but before that, so, it's true, he says he wasn't really going to stay phase one or phase two, because it is phase one, so.
Well, so my question is, let me, let me definitely question straight, please. The two is, is the thirteen and fourteen commitment that we passed in January last year, and you go ahead and do this, we still got to cover that if we?
Yes, yes, because we're not going to get to you the next phase until next year, we'll have our next batch of one.
You're not listening to what Kevin said, that phase two money might be spent in phase one.
No, gee, if you read the minutes though, it says a hundred thousand for phase, it doesn't say anything about phases.
It doesn't say phase.
Right, it just says a hundred thousand and a hundred thousand, so.
Let's back on the state, but here's one question, how much money you have now? Three seventy-six?
Three seventy-six.
I think that's.
Yeah, that's what we checked last week.
Well, if you take, take the one oh four and the fifty, it eliminate the two you spent with the money for the project.
Oh, yeah, that's, yeah, plus we have the hundred for the, for the justice, yeah, because don't forget, we got to buy some stuff out of that for the year too.
Okay, well, you keep saying a hundred, all I'm trying to say is, it could be two hundred, because we committed two hundred.
But we'll get our new alarm in next year, so we have to put another hundred thousand for Justice Street project, and we'll be there, okay? Yeah.
It might be this year is what we're saying.
Well, either we do the Justice Street project or we don't pay fees, that's what is going to go down.
Three seventy-six would be enough.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
That document that you had is contingent on the fact that we only committed that if we got the five hundred thousand. I'm not sure we got the five hundred thousand, and I, and no one has confirmed to me that we got the five hundred thousand. Let's do it this way, John.
What five hundred thousand? Keystone.
Keystone Grant, five hundred thousand, have you received any payments from Keystone?
Keystone money, we're receiving from Keystone, we're receiving about thirty-six thousand from Keystone, about thirty-nine thousand from Keystone. Money we're receiving right now is going to be quite a CPG, which was about a hundred and eighty-three, and we expect about another hundred and something thousand, a hundred and sixty-some thousand, application two, if I forget who it was, that's being reimbursed back to us. Payments are being held because of the shutdown for a week, we have a budget that we just remade for that.
Are you expecting?
I'm expecting about two hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars.
You're not expecting a half a million?
From Keystone?
Yeah.
As a down now.
Okay, I don't think we got that money.
No, we did get the money, but it's only drove, true.
Or should draw down the fact?
Keystone, you can't draw it all down.
No, I'm asking, I'm asking, was it approved?
But we did get the Keystone grant.
Keystone comes with a small portion.
Doesn't show it, I'd like to see it.
Okay, I want you, I have the, um.
There's a half million dollars.
I have intention of that.
Yeah, Keystone committed thirty-six thousand, I think it's otherwise Keystone.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
And that's how Keystone's coming in, that portion of the two out of Houston.
But it was committed, we have the commitment that we're seeing the full amount.
Okay, and then, how long, is that all that we spend this year?
Which one, the project phase one, the project we finished and dispersed?
They better get going.
But I guess to answer your question, babe, yes, we will have the other hundred thousand.
Thank you.
I got a question, yeah, what, what's, what is this one paid?
It's going to pay, you know where Leaven Street is, where the hospital is, from Line Street to Reagan, there's a little alley, run behind there, and.
We got about that size gray or two.
They're bad.
We're going to do Washington Avenue.
I got something.
Oh, okay, a bunch, I'll let you, uh, uh, uh. Do a Washington Avenue, Ridge Avenue, part of Pennsylvania Avenue, which is from the senior sanctuary center, almost all the way over to Forty People, that little alley that's died, and then quarter of Fram Avenue from Reagan Street, one block up, past the fire, you know, before the, because they're just, we're just, it's in bad shape, we have some ones.
Just a little more.
Yeah.
Michael, bring these documents, they're properly signed by Anthony, he ordered this in third, and Matthew, or this Matthew's President Incorporated, it's from Metlys Limestone Project, the proper digits are attached, provided by traffic officers and casualty, so from a legal point of view, parent side of the law, they're also included there, so you have to pass.
Is that all?
Thank you, Mr.
I'd like to make a motion if we afford a little bit of Metlys Limestone, the one hundred four thousand, one dollar and forty cents from page one.
Yes, I have.
One second. Right there?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Christine?
Pension plan compliance resolution.
Okay, we have a requirement from the state that we upgrade our procedures for requesting professional services to be provided to these our pension plans. That would include investment advice, legal advice, actuarial advice, any other consulting services that we have adopted to comply with Act 44. So, this resolution brings our current status, our current statute into compliance with the state's new requirements for Act 44. There's a change to the, if we're going to request proposal for applications, how to advertise, how they must be reviewed, the people who are any entering to the contract, conflict of interest, making the public fully aware of what we're doing, posting notifications and procedures, and any increase in professional services of one in ten percent. So, I make a motion that we adopt this resolution, putting us into compliance with the new requirements for Act 44.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Christine?
Yes.
Shitman?
Yes.
Resolution may hate Alley Kohl's Hardware, Jim.
Yes, we're watching, I was thinking, Michael, I think we have all the.
We are good to go.
Good to go.
And Mr. Cole is here?
Yes, he is.
Mr. Cole promised to leave this store open. What we're going to do is, if you pass this resolution, the city's going to execute a quick plane D, we're going to have a closing for Kohl's Hardware against the quick plane D. Kohl's Hardware is paying all the costs related to this, survey costs, we have an actual survey that's completely mapped and a key description. It used to be that we tried to do this by using a tape measure, but that's a bit, so if we pass this motion, would, does that sound right? And you're happy, Cole, is that correct?
Yeah.
Can you just explain this, the alley between the home side of Kohl's Hardware and the east side, but it happened when you brought Raspberry Avenue down, it became a dead end, which Kohl runs everything around it, technically, if you drive down the alley, you can't get around it because you don't have the proper, so here, probably six, eight years ago, we started this procedure, and then we're just finishing things up. So, at that time, I might deserve any questions? I make the motion that we make, adopt this resolution, let Mr. Cole be on the street.
One second. Ister?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Shitman?
Yes.
Criminal pain voices, John?
We have ninety-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-eight cents in general expenses, nine hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-nine cents in liquid fuel invoices to pay, I make the motion we pay.
Christine?
Yes.
Shitman?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Henry?
Point of contact, the schedule events in the city, Jim?
Yes, down on the river, you can do this on the scheduling, like taking point of city clerk, whether they be, to handle that position, scheduling on the calendar from year to year, events on the river. Any questions? I need some more. Thank you.
Shitman?
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Mr. Cole, I want to thank you in advance for your sponsorship towards our national layout, that's, we appreciate it. You were very gracious for what you got, I go, thank you very much.
And also, thank you for being understanding of the project.
We're going to talk about that more.
Any audience comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for the resolution, but we'll throw that alley. As far as the project, my only concern is, obviously, I talked to Jim last week, and I said, you know, we're patient, understand, we're a long-term project, it's a great project, the signing is what concerns me, that it's being signed, that the cross, that you can go down Second Street and cross Chestnut, but it's labeled, it has the road closed, it has been incredibly disruptive to our business, and I, you know, we're, we're patient, we're going to just, you know, going to work our way through it, but that signing could be changed, it says local traffic only, you know, trucks, I was just there before I walked in, and it says, "Street closed a tenth of a mile," and then the next sign says, "Street closed," so.
First of all, Mr. Cole, you talked about the other day, working with the company, getting more different signings there, we discussed it Friday, they all need any extra stop signs. I need two stop signs, because they're wearing right through the red lights, so we put the stop signs, Brad, I know it's a situation, you don't have time to sit down here, but what happens every once in a while, somebody comes across, one side, the other. We got it, I've had the rest of the last few states have been sitting down there also, the rest of people coming through the road closed, so I'm sure you have them called.
Even local people?
Huh?
Even local people?
Yeah. Even arrested, left and right, put people in the line, throw it, not stop.
Oh, for running the light, not for going down.
Well, it over, it says road closed, it says road closed, you can't go through there.
I'm just saying, local, traffic only.
No, it says road closed.
First sign says.
On the first sign, set you down for the alley, so we need two stop signs.
Kenny, come on, get with Jimmy, and then tell him where you want him to go.
Because you still need to change the sign, because it says road closed.
Wasn't there at one point, I put a story, when it said, "Local traffic," is there one sign coming one way?
No, there's two signs on each end, one sign said road closed and mile, the other sign said road closed, and it's the same way coming north.
We can't arrest people from both the Kohls though.
No, 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 but see, the second sign, the second sign coming north is right on the other side of Raspberry Avenue.
Sorry, to my point, we just label it local traffic only, put the stop signs in, and just let people cross Chestnut, but have to stop, I agree, use equipment.
Do you want to look into that? Do you have the sign?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, look into it, over here. No, Jim?
Um, Regina was a community activist, I would like to piggyback on Mr. Cole, a request about signage, um, I go to, I go to the Y for Apple size, and one of the senior women there was trying to cross the street, trying to cross Chestnut to get to her doctor's office, she fell, broke her finger, ended up with a black eye, and she's like seventy-six years old. There was no signage, there's no signage for the pedestrians, and there's not a pathway made, usually when construction like that is done, ramps are made for pedestrians to walk, because the sidewalks are uneven as well as the streets, so you not only need signage, you do need to address some sort of walkway for the pedestrians, thank you.
Anybody else?
Okay. Just like the home of the playground on our Keller Street, we got the equipment, most of it in there now, it's going to be a lot nicer than what it was, we got people came down and they put their mulch in, I'm sure you're aware of that, they did a pretty good job, started a little pretty decent down there, a few more on and ends, you have a bunch of kids using it, a lot of kids out there, you know, I know they're dying, I'm just curious if they're using it.
Nego committed, gave five grand, paid for the equipment, they bought a work crew down Friday.
Thank you, I know on Friday, the rest of the city worked it up, all, all week up there.
Right, re-mulched it, they spent probably, it says eight hours there, Nego employees did a nice job, and playgrounds cleaned up, we got some painting to do yet, and we're on the stretch.
Thank you.
Chief?
Uh, may I talk to Councilor Meister about this, our old car six has now been disabled, recommend a dummy that probably should try to get that on the sell-in block, just to try to sell it for a quarter. I had a couple weeks ago, a, before it broke down, those gap companies that are always calling to have these bare cars laying around, and now, right after that happened, the car was fixed, so I make a recommendation to Jimmy that we get that out of the buys, to put out the bids, to sell, it was not sitting around on the city corner for months and a half.
So, showing the letters and the, and the, contribution, you know, corner of the sub-down.
Anybody else? Uh, did you see on the list, if you have, if you don't have, usually getting the part yet? Yes, sir.
Kevin Snyder, Strawberry Supply, I'm back again, he goes on politically, I'm back, I'm taking advice. In regard to the licensing again, we talked about.
Contractor licensing, contractor licensing, yes, go ahead.
I'm thinking for a citation like that, it won't, I guess you're egoing, went too far, but.
That's what they do.
We're going to ask you to appeal it, or, I mean, I'm going to appeal it anyway, but maybe you'll have to roll it before we get into that, that category, but again, we're going to go back to these people who don't have licenses, and they're working under your nose, sometimes don't have a license. I see that you did get Harry's Department of Heating, getting in, and get a license. Frank Colton, he's still not on the list, I did get a new contractors list this morning, not a boss list, but if that's the question, it's really, do we know what we're doing down there in the, in the code office?
I see this guy has a license, unless I missed something.
I did, but I was on the list before, the last meeting, now I'm not even on the list again.
You should be, I mean.
Well, I actually printed it out this morning, I'll, I'll ask her tomorrow morning why you're not on the list. She'll be on the list. It isn't a matter of pushing it, let me, we get a contractor's list?
I would imagine, I'm not quite sure how she was about doing it, but she's been doing it for twenty-seven years.
Well, it's just amazing that this stuff happens, and like I say, people are working here, you know, and they don't have a license, so, and I, and I just ride around town, not only because now it spurred my interest, you know, when I got a, I went to the post office the day after we, I was here, there was a guy working in your ASA, talking about, he doesn't have a license either.
Working no luck.
I was looking for work in there, you know, I, I think in your office, or you had to go see, like, what contracting, he was there all day, or he wasn't there.
I had a volunteer went there and swept the floors and washed the floors for me, I don't know what he was doing, what day was he there, who was it?
There's two, you had the last meeting.
I'll find out who was.
The day was, I mean, that's the day was?
It was Saturday, it's Tuesday.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you what the name is too, he drives a black, or a red, Cuban van. Name is Thomas Rice, uh, Rice, that, that apartment. I don't, he's not on the list either.
I don't know, I had the construction working done, so I'll check it out for you.
Well, I don't, go back again, because like we got a verification, it's not construction.
It's not somebody walking in or the broom sweeping the floor either.
Service work.
That's not service work, volunteerism is the service work.
Well, I don't know if he was paid or bounced here, I can say he was there.
I don't know either.
Are you saying you only do service work?
Well, I want to do service.
No, I said, do you only, that's all you do is service work?
Oh, we do contacting work also, no, but.
And that's why you were required to have.
Okay, when, when do I need the license, at the beginning of the year?
That's when, that's when it comes, when, yeah.
What about, I don't know, you're working a shift?
Okay, well, then, when you, when you do your first job in the city?
Okay, well, so, I'm trying to get the playground here on the, in the scope of the work.
But now, listen, now, let's be fair about this, and listen, this is how this started. I believe I spoke to you a year ago, and you're the one that had the attitude, you're the one that said, if you weren't called, you'd never got a license or a permit to work in the city, and you never would do that.
I got a notice too, also.
Okay, but then I said to you, I'm glad you said that, because if we catch you again, there will be no courtesy calls, you're going to get cited.
But they called.
And I, I was as good as my word.
I was called.
Okay.
Nineteen minutes, I paid it the next day, no, well, you, you got your, you got your money, but, I'm just saying, there's other people here working under your nose.
If we catch them?
Well, how can you not catch them, you didn't catch Harry's Department of Heating, and he was here going to work.
No, no, he put, he put an application in here, but he didn't pay for it, I talked to him, I talked to her to pay up at the meeting, we called him up, and we said, "Where's the money?" He came right over and paid.
But doesn't he also take care of your, your job jotties and stuff like that?
No.
He doesn't?
We have our own job jotties.
Yeah, who takes your, for you?
We do.
Who pumps it up?
Oh, we, we pumps it, we pumps it, we pumps it.
Uh.
See, you're confusing, you're confusing.
I'm not confusing, it's a service work, not commercial work.
Commercial work is anything that is not covered on the residential, okay? All right?
Wait, I, I, commercial work is anything that has producing congress, one way or another, that goes back to Mr. Rice's rental buildings?
When you're providing a service, if you're not selling the parts that go with the service, then it's a devil. If you're coming in, and you're just servicing an air conditioner or something like that, you're not bothered, but if you're going to sell that air conditioner for the building, you need a permit and you need a license.
So, it's service work over there when you.
You also sold your certified air conditioning, you can't.
That was last year.
I'm just saying.
I had, I got a license for last year, I got one left for this year.
Well, when I called, they said you were doing, you were doing work over there, that's all I know.
Maybe you'll have to check up what I'm, under service contracted to the county to provide by service, or air conditioning. I mean, what?
I know, you, if that's all you were doing, then that's all you were doing, but you, you had given us the, here to put stuff on the roof, and you were going to sell us those products.
Yeah, but I think that didn't do it.
Well, you're doing more than, say, you're doing more than performing the service, you're also selling the service.
Sometimes I do it, sometimes I don't, man, if I'm doing service work, I'm doing service work.
That's what, that's what, that's what the contractor's license is based off of, it's just residential, estate licensing overrides the local license, you don't need it, once you get it to commercial, I know that it's a good question.
Okay. Tom Tom is here doing work, doesn't he?
Tom Tom is providing a service, yes.
I don't have a.
We're not selling the same product.
We're doing service work. We're getting paid. And we had this discussion before, it was if I did service work, I'd also get another license. For a commercial building.
It's supposed to have that. Like people that build the floors.
I'll be trying to sell the truck.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's, that's a really gray area.
It sounds nice where we had enough of this discussion. No, but it sounds like Mr. Snyder is appealing something, so that's not what the judge tested. Thanks, Mr. Snyder.
Go ahead. We'll just get. I'll see you down at the District Attorney's office.
All right. Anybody else? We sent music in a park on July twenty-eighth, Timothy's bird, July twenty-ninth, they first ever banned, July the first, counting the dream. August fourth, we counted the dreams also, and that's also National Night Out.
Sixty.
Sixty, eight o'clock. That's I believe is two, next Tuesday. Okay, thank everybody for coming. Speed is adjourned.